Yeah, we got something.
Now conduct the vote for the council members. Alderman Watzek here. Alderman Durham.
Here.
Alderman Watzek.
Here.
We have the floor. Item five, council recommendations of possible action. Appointment of an alderman to serve for major of term for District Three, which expires May 2022. And take action is deemed necessary. So Cindy, do you have any nominees?
Oh. Yes, definitely.
No mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Rue.
I have a rank of all.
Right of all. You have it. Please take a vote on the.
Just second one.
On the random. And take a vote. Great. And then. And then we'll have to better. Certain processes. Since that's your answer. And we can get her sworn in. So.
And you said it is.
So. Alderman Watzek, how do you vote?
No.
Yes, alright. Alderman Durham.
Why would I vote and just have? Can I just abstain?
It's the same as a no vote, I think.
I'm just gonna abstain.
Alright, so. Alderman Durham abstains. Or in bias. Okay, so we have two eyes and one abstained. So it looks like. This now will be. She's not here. I swear in my name.
I just heard.
Okay. Is that bit settled? Okay. Now here, we have Mr. Mendez here. He's an attorney that's helping us. Money bonds for a sewer project in our great city. And it's a consideration and action. Permitting and ordinance authorizing issuance of four million ninety-nine thousand City of Seagrave, Texas combination tax and surplus revenue certificates obligation, taxable series twenty twenty-one and related matters. If we'll be able to get hold of.
No, she has a big jury.
Mayor, if you'd like to pick up to. Hold this item until we hear back from the active play out.
Okay.
That way you accomplish that. That video.
We have to have a super majority considered. So why was this?
Do you see it, she can join us and we have a special.
Okay.
And if not, take up the matter and prove it and then we.
No, no. So we're just trying to get you on as quick as.
Sure, sure, I'll say the intercambies of all anyways. I'll, I'll, I'll. What if we see if we can get her off.
Okay, alright, good news.
Thank you.
We'll postpone this one for a little bit till later in the day. Alright, we've got a resolution amending authorized text school users. Take action is deemed necessary. Dan, is that you?
Yes, it is. Text pool, Charles Evans, who's the alternate. Member of the text pool. And I'm taking him off and creating a new one.
Okay. Alright, Cindy stay here just a second.
Yes. Well, can you dispel on this speaker?
Wait just a second.
Okay, let me come in and just phone on that one. Now, well, it has to be a super, what you calling?
Super majority.
Super majority, there has to be. You just, just. Okay.
Like you could just put her on speaker.
Put his hand on speaker.
Hey. I want to be aware, he said we could just put you on speaker, if that's okay. Okay, it's always, okay.
Alright, let's, let's record Alderman Middleton here for this group. We'll go back to it. Alright, agenda item six, she's joining us just for this. Mr. Mendez.
Well, thank you for joining us, Alderman. My name's David, and this is for the audience here today and for the council. What I'm doing is presenting for your consideration adoption. The order authorizing the bonds that you're going to sell to the USDA. The USDA transaction is one that the city has been negotiating for some time. It'll do, it's a waste park facility. And so it's sold to them at a one point seven five percent tax rate. So a very favorable tax rate that you got from the federal government. The ordinance that you have before you tonight is authorize situations of those bonds, authorizes with mayor and Dan to execute the documents and then allows me to present to the attorney general for their about. If the bonds are secured by and paid for from the revenues of the system. And they're backed on, they have a backup pledge from that the law taxes. And that's the reason that we have the alderman joining us like long. So we have a super majority of the board here present today. I don't know if you have questions of the just sold and we close on the water park loan last week for the weight of the water. So these, so with this one, you'll complete the renovation of both systems. And so are there questions on the, you got councilman? Any questions? Alderman, you're on the phone there and I don't know if you have any questions of this now, this particular transaction. It was on the agenda.
No, I don't understand.
Well, so could we accept that, Mayor, that is a motion to authorize guy?
Yes.
Yes, I have a motion to be accepted by. I said.
Okay. Alderman made a motion to accept item six, which is the consideration and action approving and ordinance authorizing issuance of four million ninety-nine thousand City of Seagrave, Texas combination tax and surplus revenue certificates obligation, taxable series twenty twenty-one and related matters. I have a second.
A second.
Okay, I have motion and I have a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Did you hear me?
She's, she's noted the item, the register will reflect that. Alderman has noted that. Thank you all. And then Mayor, I'm going to meet with you and then in the morning I will get the documents executed. Thank you, Alderman, for making yourself available for the meeting.
Thanks, Gabriel.
These two actions for the audience, the loan first and now this USDA is going to allow us to upgrade our water system significantly. You're going to see Eagle Tower be replaced before long because it's, it's on its last legs. And then we're also going to have massive upgrade to our sewer system. So we'll be sustainable for many more years. It's taken eighteen months of planning to get us this far. So thank you, council. Alright, let's go back to item seven, resolution amending the authorized text school users take action is deemed necessary. Mr. Drive told us that, that they're taking. Pass mayor off and putting me on as the alternate, like our motion to that effect.
I make a motion that we update authorize our mayor, we dominate the. On the text pool.
The motion is that, that we replace.
Replace.
And then, and then place me on that as the alternate.
A second.
The motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. Last meeting, we had to talk at some length about. T, lack of a better word, that are in loans and grants, et cetera. And in this particular, in the. In twenty nineteen, it was agreed, March of twenty nineteen, it's agreed. By the mayor with your permission. Make sure we comply with certain elements. Among those elements. Our current city hall does not comply with the. The American Disabilities Act. Or ways are way too narrow. Among other things, we also have, remember, we had. An asbestos test on the old city hall, found to be seriously contaminated with asbestos. We. Required to do something about the annual compliance within three years. The clock on that started about three weeks ago. We took the first of the two pieces of federal money. And if we don't comply within three years, they, they can turn us over to the Department of Justice for noncompliance of federal law. We don't want that. We spoke with Mr. Perkins, USDA, and USDA offers low interest loans for. By talking about this. Going into item mine as well, which is reviewing the architectural renderings from the proposed community facility. That community facility is one of two options. Option is renovate city hall, renovate the asbestos, expand it a little bit, make it safe for all our citizens to get in and out of it. Us to be in full compliance. Or build a city hall just across the park from there, just west. There's very low interest, plenty of it, or forty year term. I'm just using a number here for explanatory purposes. A billion dollar loan over forty years costs us thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. Either way. We're going to spend several hundred thousand dollars even to renovate the city hall. What I need from you, they've not done this yet, they've sent us some drawings, ten of the drawings. But they've not priced the two options, which. I'll need you to go ahead and go ahead and ask them to do that first, so we know how much money we're talking about. This isn't a very big facility, see the drawings, there's an expanded drawing and a smaller drawing. Yeah, I mean, yeah. So. We need to sort of figure out how much it's going to cost us. Mr. Perkins may be listed again for the USDA, he said he might try. But he needs to see that we're committed to fixing this issue before we decide what.
We do, we do keep the. Office that and it will be.
Can be rearranged.
Your rear end system must be.
Well, if, this is the small margin, old building that's brought on to addition.
No, we're not saying a lot of process.
We'll have. That's a lot to be an addition. So. It could go either way, we just have, have to figure out the pricing and then have to figure out our next steps. There's some terms of compliance. So what we're looking for is a motion to.
Make a motion that we go forward, make it crossing on expanding the building as well as building the new one.
Okay, I have a motion to give the pricing to the new building and, and a second set of pricing for expanding the old one and renovating it. And now. Okay, I have a second. All in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Last year, as I understand it, item ten is a discussion of possible action regarding hours of operation and efficient policy. For municipal. We've largely dropped most of the rules we put in place because of COVID. This year, in part because of the governor's relaxing of the standards and his rules. We just wanted to make sure that you all know that people from out of town can now swim in our pool and, and that's. Are there any comments about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. Okay, the consent agenda is, are the items considered to be routine and acted by one motion without separate discussion? If you guys decide to, to discuss an item, that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Were there any comments about consent? Create a force from the greatest officer, department heads, that sort of thing? No? Then, no, alright. I've looked it over pretty thoroughly and the only thing I would note is that we're going to have to do a number of budget amendments soon. I'm inheriting this, but I'm notifying you, we're going to have to do a bunch of budgets for this to bring some of the departmental lines back in shape. The overall budget is not used up, I'm not saying that. We have some lines that are serious. And so. Once we get those in line, that'll be for the rest of the year, you know, the recommended amendments. And then, I don't intend to sign any more checks unless budget is, unless it has money in the, that line for that line. I just, okay?
Can we ask?
No, no. Bring it next. It's a lot of work, Dan stood by itself in last second. Alright. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approach the consent agenda with the sections of the lines, which says.
Alright, so I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the section of the lines that I discussed about budget. I do a second?
A second, two second.
Alderman Durham, second. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. We have a public comment period and there's been a couple of folks that have signed up for the public comments. Please limit your conversation with us to three minutes.
Mr. Verma, sign. Lee Verma.
Lee, okay, you're on, man.
Afternoon.
Sit down, sit down, please.
My question is, I guess we'll work with you for today and with the new website and everything, I was trying to look at the source. And I know it's the last time, the, the last, the last available minutes is July thirteen twenty twenty. I just didn't know if there was a reason for that as far as why, I mean, the agendas are available. Up till today, so I was just, my, there's why, and it's my. And that's my question.
I didn't hear a question.
We, looking at the city website sees that the. Archives of minutes, the last, the last minutes that are on the website are July twenty twenty. And I know I sent my current ones there, maybe you can, are not posted easily combined, but I'll look into that and correct.
The answer is, we'll look into it in the morning and get you an answer. I'll call you, and I know what the answer is, how's that?
That one.
Okay, who's next?
I'm sorry. Alderman Rodriguez, and he's got a translator.
She's not at her, I don't think, right now.
Excited.
Excited. You sure you can hold this?
No.
There's other people that we tried, and forty of them here.
Is she coming back yet? I mean, alright, well, let's just wait. We haven't taken recess now anyway. Sorry, guys, but we had, one of our members have to go to a meeting real quick. He'll be back in fifteen minutes, he promised. So we're on break from right now. We good? Okay, there are no, no other couple.
No, no one else. I got the lady in one, to talk about us. Or about the cost of it.
I think she's on the brother Ian.
Yeah, she's on the Ian.
The last person.
Yes, Armando, Armando, yes, yes, that's her husband. Thank you. Mr. Verma, I can't, I, I. I.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, alright. Come just a bit closer, so you can hear. Okay. No more public comments? I passed, I'm on item thirteen, any item warrants discussion, but no actual. Okay. I passed out the budget calendars. For everyone to get a look at, the plan to start. I heard earlier, I think, that we have to pass. Dan and I are going to work together on revenue estimates. Department heads are going to need to work with their expenditures, the idea that I don't want to raise tax rate at all this year, I just don't. That's up to all of us to decide when that time comes, but that's where I'm at. Okay. You're on, you're on the business.
Is there, is there a, we can. Your appreciation for the first responders? I'm on the network, Charlie, President, our behalf. Council, my, I'm a DM network. I think, I mean, I'm picking for myself, I must be a bit more. But it's, I mean, it's an ideal thing that we do something for our first responders because we're, we're handling. And working the rain and all stuff. Appreciation from the city that, you know, we're supporting them. Something that we can bring up.
May have to do private donations.
Okay. We can break that down.
Yeah, okay.
And that, that, that's like a five, okay?
What's wrong? Yeah. Like that. Yes.
How recently was, you know, treated that? They had a safety day and what they had was they had. The full area open and, I mean, this is just an ideal, but, you know, because. I personally think that kids should always be an extra law enforcement, fire department, EMS, to know that they're there for them, not you. And anyway, what they did was they had a police unit, an ambulance and a fire truck there, and then a food truck was there. And they just invited everyone to come in, meet and greet, everything, and then they were swimming, you know, they had people there that was doing some. CPR demonstrations and stuff, you know, whatever. Just something, you know, something we, maybe we could try and get something done pretty, you know, during the summer to where we can involve the law enforcement, EMS.
Would you be willing to head a committee to do that?
I can work on it.
Okay.
I'll hear you. I said I'll hear.
Alright, yes. They just said, I said, I should draw a portion, hundred and all, let me have to live this on the calendar, if we got this thing.
When it said?
I don't remember.
Yes? Yes.
I'm curious if then. Okay, so Shannon and Cindy, you're going to be a committee to try and get that point by seat of your hand. No, you're waving a flag. I don't know. Is there any other? Item warrants discussion in business? Okay, that, that ends the open part of the meeting. We're going to go into executive session now, we've got a couple of things we have to deal with. And so everybody has to leave. There it is. Thank you for coming, though. Thank you for coming though. I'd stay way down there, because we're going into executive session again. See if I also got. Okay, all right, so item fifteen. Need to approve the minutes of the previous meetings.
I make a motion to accept. Minutes of the previous.
Alderman, bias, motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting, I need a second. Second. Want a favor? I, unanimous, all right, now we'll go back into executive session. Sorry, guys.
Too long to stay now there.
Okay, we're going to come out of the executive session now and take a possible action. The chief of police, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that.
I want it to. He has to pass.
I second.
Two, two, three, whatever. Okay, all right. One couple didn't come back that. No, yeah, right here. Lady holds the restroom.
No, he would like to leave, so it ends.
Okay, all right then, all right. Take a motion to adjourn. Hold it, Dave, Dave, what's the second Monday?
Uh, right here, December twelve.
July twelfth, six thirty. And it was. I need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn to be.
Bias, any motion, you second?
I second.
The room, second, all in favor? That was fast. Thanks, folks, we're done.